Helps to have the microphone on. At this time, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting for June 26, 2023. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk Deaton, could you please let the roll call show? Councilmember Moser will be absent this evening. Councilmember Kennedy.
Make the motion to excuse Councilmember Moser.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Onto the approval of city council minutes, June 12, 2023. And I know we've got a couple of things here. Councilmember Kivell, you want to kick us off?
Yeah, please. On page nine, during the discussion with the budget, there needs to be some changes, at least as we're aware of what has gone on. There was one, two, three, well, she knows which one.
Yeah, it was typos of the vote.
Yeah. It was a goof that she doesn't know why.
Okay. Councilmember Kivell, would you mind just pointing it out for the record?
Aye.
Thanks.
There was a, there was five noes and two yeses, so.
Okay, and Councilmember Kurt Swell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also recall at that meeting that we did have a member from the audience that provided a copy of an ordinance. And normally, if somebody brings something up to council to review, and it's during a meeting, it should be included with the minutes. I did not see that ordinance. I tried to stop by that homeowner's, oh.
I tried to stop by that homeowner's home to try to get a copy of it. He wasn't home. But that should be included also. Okay.
Okay.
Well, if that's it, I'd like to move the minutes as.
Amended.
Amended.
You're all right.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Kivell, supported by Councilmember Dill. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. We have no bills this evening, so we're on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Councilmember Dill.
I'll move the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. We have no consent agenda this evening, so at this time, we will honor one of our own and our really good community friend, Dana Johnson and the Johnson family. Whereas, volunteers are citizens who give tirelessly of their time and energy without desire for personal recognition or personal gain. And whereas Dana Johnson has given more than 40 years of continued dedication, of support, and passion for the city of South Lyon. And whereas, for more than 40 years, Dana has organized and run countless Memorial Day, Pumpkin Fest, and Christmas parades. Whereas Dana has served on the Pumpkin Fest Committee, the Historical Society, and currently serves on the First Responders Memorial Committee and the Cultural Arts Commission. Whereas, during her lifetime, she has demonstrated in countless ways her dedication to the welfare of others and has earned the respect and the affection of people from all walks of life and ages. Now, therefore, I, Daniel L. Pelchett, Mayor, City of South Lyon, on behalf of our city council and the entire community, offer congratulations to Dana Johnson for her commitment to our community and call upon the citizens of South Lyon to recognize and celebrate this special occasion with sincere congratulations for her years of success in service. So, thank you. Congratulations.
Does she want to, can she say something?
Absolutely. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment for anyone that would like to speak on Dana or the Johnson family, and then we'll open the floor for normal public comment after that as well. You don't have to speak, Dana, if you don't want to.
You don't have to unless you want to. Oh, this is my good friend here. I had a CNI Jackson. Unfortunately, for those who don't, I lost, I got a virus and lost my sight, and I'm dealing with it. This wonderful lady came to the parade and kept me from getting ran over by cars. But it's been a joy, and I'm not stopping doing the things in our community that we have here. There's so much we have to do. We have parades coming. We have 150th birthday of our wonderful community. So I'm hoping people will get out and volunteer and be more a part of our community. I mean, I am a blessed woman. I live in a phenomenal community with phenomenal people, with, I have phenomenal friends all the time. So I have a little hiccup in my, in my eyes, but, but I'm still going to continue doing the things I love to do, which is protect and serve and be a part of our community. I mean, heck, I can't get any more trouble because, you know, my brother, my brother will keep me in line. Yeah. So I just wanted to express my gratitude and thank you for the lovely sentiments. I appreciate it very much. And thank you for keeping our community as nice it is, because without the people in this room and the city council, you know, I've seen so many other communities be so crazy, and ours is just wonderful. We do have a great community. So, thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, we'll now open the floor for public comment.
This is Judy Keeling, 62180 Arlington Circle, and I just personally want to thank Dana for all the things she's done for us and our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Mark Childs, 209 South Lafayette. Thank you, Dana, for all your service over the years. Really appreciate the business community. Thank you very much. Wanted to bring attention to the council, mayor, and city manager, and folks in the audience. We lost one of our fellow businesspeople a couple of weeks ago, Bill Stefanovic, longtime bakery owner with his wife and children, and a longtime business owner's downtown. Bill and his wife and kids, one of the first people that we met when we first opened our family business going on 30 years ago. They were in business, South Lyon Vils Bakery, for over 37 years. And Bill and his wife, along with Paul Baker and Diane Rose, people that we met when we first came to the community, and they're all deceased now, and we miss them, you know. And I know Bill was very active in the community with donations and so forth for any type of group that came to his door, just like several of us all are. We asked for contributions almost on a daily basis, and he always did that. He's also very supportive of the soccer community in the South Lyon area. And I know he was elected to the South Lyon High School Athletic Hall of Fame a while back. And I'm not sure of facts about this, but if there's any room for possibly naming a soccer field after him, that would be something that I would suggest. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi, my name is Allison Rannish, and I apologize, I wanted to print this, but issues with my printer. I'm the president of South Lyon Pride Board, and I just wanted to address that, I understand there's been a few people in our community that have expressed concerns about our upcoming South Lyon Pride in the Park event. So I wanted to take the opportunity to inform city council about this event myself. So this is our third year hosting South Lyon Pride at McHattie Park on July 8th, coming up now, and this year will be our biggest year yet. We'll have over 30 booths, hosting vendors, nonprofits, and business sponsors, multiple performers, a DJ, a stage, food for purchase, and much more. While our event has grown over the past three years, there is one thing that has stayed the same: our family-friendly oriented approach. We are very aware that our event takes place at our public park. Every vendor has been informed of the culture of our event and instructed to only bring merchandise that fits with our family-friendly culture. Our DJ and performers know to keep the music and dialogue kid-appropriate. This event is free to the community largely thanks to the support of 11 awesome local businesses, churches, and clubs who have generously helped to fund this event through their sponsorship. Additionally, dozens of businesses in and near South Lyon have shown their support by displaying our event flyers. We are also collaborating with a local church to provide parking for folks who can't walk to our event. This event has been approved by the South Lyon Police Department and South Lyon City Hall. As more and more small towns in Michigan like South Lyon host local pride events, LGBTQ folks now have the option of celebrating their identity at a pride event within their own community. It's so important that LGBTQ plus folks know they are embraced, seen, and supported for who they are right here in South Lyon. I am thankful for the overwhelming, oh, okay.
Nope, you can go ahead and finish your thought.
Okay. I am thankful for the overwhelming community support of this event, and I look forward to continued growth for years to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Everyone gets to go, I promise.
We're going to fight it out. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Tanya Nevitt, 117 North Lafayette Street. South Lyon is my business address. I am here tonight as a DDA board member since 2019. I'm the owner of Venue, a shop downtown South Lyon since 2017, and also as a resident of the city of South Lyon since 1999. Don't do any of that math. As a member of the DDA board who took on the large task of developing the social district proposal that is in front of you this evening, I'm thrilled to see it come to fruition tonight. As board, we have worked so hard over the last year to make the best decisions with each detail of this proposal. I was a part of the task force who toured and experienced the highly successful downtown Farmington Social District, taking, sorry, talking to their downtown leaders and business owners about the wonderful things it has done for their downtown. I have no doubt this will be a huge asset for our current businesses and future potential businesses who we can better entice to come to South Lyon. As a downtown business owner, I am beyond excited what the social district will bring to our downtown. It's been frustrating to watch local patrons head to neighboring cities to experience the social district atmosphere that so many offer now. And I include myself in that group of people who would much rather spend our dollars locally. The social district will absolutely have a positive effect on all of our downtown businesses, both retail and restaurants and bars. Lastly, as a city resident for the last 24 years, I can confidently speak on behalf of my many neighbors and friends that we are so excited to add our wonderful city of South Lyon to the list of, last I checked, 99 other social districts in the state of Michigan. As of February, that was the number, anyway. With all that said, I am hoping for city council's yes vote on this. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Dana. You're a rock star, and that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Julie Paquette. I am a business owner located within the DDA at 415 South Lafayette, and I just wanted to come up very briefly to express my support for the social district. I don't think that it will directly impact my business positively or negatively, and I know there has been a few concerns about some businesses that maybe should be included and aren't currently included. However, all of that said, I think that overall, the social district will do a lot for our community, you know, bringing vitality to our downtown and benefit all of us. So I would just like to express my support for your yes vote for it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Jeff Heinonen, 350 South Lafayette, and the current chair of the South Lyon DDA Board. The South Lyon DDA Board and its task force has worked diligently for the last several months to bring the social district before you. The South Lyon DDA also has voted unanimously on its positive impacts to this community. For years, we have seen our surrounding communities flourish. Our surrounding communities flourish from the, all the influx of people, businesses, and just general patrons. One of the things that has held us back in the city of South Lyon is having a destination and places for these people to go. The South Lyon Social District is what will bring us together. Tonight, all of you can affect monumental change here for the city of South Lyon. The goal is to bring change to the city, and you have the ability to do that, and look forward to a vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we're going to close our first public comment, and we will move on to the discussion of downtown this evening with DDA Director Nate Mack.
All right, good evening, mayor and council. First, I want to say congrats to Dana. She was one of the first people I met when I came to South Lyon and started working here, and kind of took me under her wing and said, "I'm going to introduce you to a bunch of people." And yeah, she's, she's been great to work with. So, congrats to you. Very worthy award. Couldn't have happened to a better person. All right, we'll get into my report now. So I'm continuing to work on the revitalizing, revitalization, and placemaking grant that's due on Friday, working again with Oakland County on that to submit as a group of communities, hopefully to have a greater impact, to improve our chances of actually being successful with the grant. Let's see here. For the downtown training, I had a meeting last week, early last week, with the individual doing the training. They sent me a proposal the end of last week, and we're looking to get a date in July lockdown. I'm just waiting to hear it back from a few more people before we confirm a date. But the training's going to be in two two-hour sessions, so the first one will be, you know, kind of going over the, over social media, how you can use it to improve your business, how different businesses can interact with each other to improve both their engagement and the person they're interacting with. And then the second session, we'll kind of be putting those into practice and answering any other questions. We're also continuing to work on the stories for the 150th anniversary project. I've gotten a list of about 35 story ideas from the individual that we're working with. We're trying to whittle that down to 20, so. With that, I think that's it for me. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Councilwoman Kennedy.
On the, the social media training, Nate, is that a train-the-trainer session, or are the businesses all going to have the attending and somebody's coming in to teach them all?
It will be the, somebody's coming in to teach them all.
Okay. Just curious, do you have some ideas to how many businesses have signed up or plan to participate in this?
I don't yet, no.
That's all you have. Okay. Councilwoman Kivell.
The little pocket park downtown, are we going to see lights or anything start to get roped around down there?
Yes, so I spoke with DPW to try and get some plants in there to see what we can do for that, to get it planted again, as well as, you know, we can order some new of those twinkly lights that are, that don't currently work that are there, so.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. Yeah, those don't work.
Thank you. Councilmember Dill.
A really tiny thing. You had said last week that, and I forgot to ask it, that we are, you are going to do like the sales again that were over by the, over by the barber shop in that little area. Is there a reason for that, or? It just looks so cool.
Yeah, it did look cool. I spoke with the building owner, and they said they didn't want us drilling into the side of the building because it's older and the mortar is not as strong as it used to be, so.
Makes sense.
Yeah. I said, "Okay, I won't do that then."
All right, thanks, Nate.
Thank you.
Onto the fire chief report this evening, and Chief Thorington.
Mayor, council? I guess first, I know Dana left, but I'd like to thank her as well. I've only been here a year and a half, and it didn't take too long to figure out the importance of her role in the community and parades and fire department open houses, and she's been very helpful in my short time here. So it is a word well deserved. We are currently at 641 incidents today. That includes a storm that blew through yesterday and knocked down some trees and cloned acres across the city. I worked with the police. I put some pictures on Facebook, and I wanted to see it, and I realized about 10 minutes ago that the police has almost identical pictures, so you can see it either place. The old ladder truck is gone. It's down in Georgia now. I'm not sure what I'm going to talk about in an upcoming meeting, except the truck's done. I've talked about the new truck, the old trucks since I've been here, so. But that is a done deal. As far as fireworks in the city, I'd like to remind people that per ordinance, no person shall ignite, discharge, or use fireworks in the city at any time except between June 29 and July 4th, between 11:00 a.m. and 11:45 p.m. on each of those days, and then before Labor Day on September 3rd and 4th, same 11 to 11:45 p.m. It does not include the small, low-impact fireworks. Lastly, we did have our showers redone in the station with a local handyman, Paul Lawson, was the little bed, which is nice, local. He lives here in town. We had a, got a deal on the tile through, it was a discontinued commercial, looks really nice, that replaced our beat-up, broken inserts. So we're in the process of finishing the rest of it. Once it's done, we'll post pictures for it, and that's all I have.
Great.
Yeah.
Councilmember Dill.
I'm going to give you an opportunity to talk about the truck.
Right.
I just want, there was some discussion on Facebook about why we would need a ladder truck and why we wouldn't just wait around for Lyon Township to show up with theirs. Could you, for the record, explain what is important about having that kind of a truck for our community?
Yep, I think a lot of times the misconception, excuse me, there's a misconception with ladder trucks that they're for air, or high rises. They're also used on every commercial fire, residential fire for roof operations. It's a safer operation. It's usually a little quicker than popping a ladder up on the roof, a ground ladder, and then you have a second means of egress. So it's used for multiple things, as well as for reach on a, as I listed, sound, they pulled some of a swamp where they extended the truck out, reached out the person, and pulled them out. I mean, just, there's a lot of uses for a ladder truck that you don't think about, and then probably most importantly, Santa Claus, that the parades occur. But there are a lot of uses for the ladder truck, for sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Yep.
Anyone else got anything for chief? Thanks for the update, chief.
All right, thank you.
And we'll move on to the police chief report with Chief Baki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. First, I'd like to congratulate Dana Johnson. She's not here, my older sister, right? Growing up with Dana is very interesting. We're not going to go down that road right now. I've got a lot of stuff here that I want to talk about, but it's well deserved for her, and I congratulate her and her family. They do immense, a ton of stuff for this city. She's been doing it since high school, literally, so. Just got a couple of things, actually. I want to congratulate Sergeant Faunt, Detective Barber, for receiving their certificates of merit for their outstanding job that they've worked on our shooting we had a few weeks ago. We had one individual injured by gunshot, and they did a great job on the case and were able to secure felony charges on the suspect, so I want to thank them for their hard work on that one. Our promotional process is complete. We do have a sergeant's list in place. Again, congratulating Ron Barber, he's on the top of the list, and we see a retirement of one of our sergeants coming very soon, probably at the end of the year, maybe the beginning of next year. So it's a much-needed list, we're going to need that coming up for our succession planning. We've got some new equipment, we've got new ballistic helmets, they just came in, so we're going to be turning in our old helmets for new ones, and we are accepting applications for police officers. Right now, we have four applicants at this time, and that's all I got for right now.
Anyone got anything for Chief Baki tonight? All right, thanks, chief.
Thank you.
You guys are great. All right. So unfinished business number one this evening, the DDA Social District.
All right. Hello again. So at the last meeting, we brought forward to you a proposal for a social district in downtown South Lyon. You know, a lot of the, a lot of the work that went into creating the social district was taken up by the DDA Board. It was a project that they got behind earlier this year and worked very hard to develop what our social district will look like. I explained, you know, at the last meeting, the number of reasons why the district is the way it is, why we decided to do it now, you know, the council is familiar with all that information. So I guess I just want to leave you with just a few final words, and I'll be happy to answer any questions about the social district. But we have an opportunity now to implement this in our downtown. There's actually 104 social districts now, as of June 6th, throughout the state of Michigan. They've been incredibly successful for downtowns, bringing people to the community, creating a more vibrant community atmosphere, and so, yeah, that, you know, it'll be in place for us, we'll be able to be on par with other communities in the surrounding area, and it'll be a good thing for us. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Councilwoman Kurt Swell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions, so I would ask for a little bit of additional time if that meets with the mayor's approval.
That's perfectly fine.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first thing I'd like to sort of clear the air on with respect to the social district and those who are included and those who may not be included, you know, I had this discussion maybe six years ago, seven years ago, and I did a ton of research on it and went to the economic director at that time and wanted clarification on why the social district could not be enlarged to include certain businesses. And, and I was not as savvy with the state taxing authority, I mean, with the county taxing authorities as I am now. So, you know, there's always that learning curve, so I learned a lot. But maybe you could pass along to the individuals in the audience and the community as to the difficulty that it would be to enlarge the DDA district and the potential, I don't want to say harm, but how it may not be beneficial to the DDA to have that district enlarged. So pass along that information.
Yeah, do you want me to?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So when you establish a DDA district, typically downtown development authority is in the core downtown area of a community. It's one of the few local economic development tools a municipality, meaning city, village, or township, has to, I don't know, do economic development activities. A lot of that money goes to state agencies, county agencies, what have you. But with the DDA, the way you establish it, so look, we'll do, use South Lyon as an example, established, I believe, in 1996, and the base year of the tax capture is the year 2000. So what that means is any property tax increases going forward from the year 2000, the DDA captures that increase in the property taxes. So it's not an additional tax on the businesses, it's just the DDA captures the increase in the property taxes over the course of time, and they reinvest that money back into the DDA district. That's how, that's how tax increment financing works. Now, if you were to expand a DDA district, or alter the boundaries, or do anything like that, that opens up a whole other process where you, where the other taxing jurisdictions, so you have, so the DDA captures tax dollars from the city, from the county, from the library, and we do not capture any school taxes. Once you open that up, it allows these other taxing entities to either opt out or kind of enter into a negotiation with the DDA to say, "Hey, you know, you're actually not going to capture these tax dollars," or they could just opt out entirely. So expanding the district is not only a ton of work, I mean, you have to send it out in, you know, multiple newspapers, you have to notify everybody, the council has to be in favor of it, the board, the DDA Board has to make the recommendation to expand the district. You really do stand to lose a lot of money. You could potentially reset your base year, which would mean, instead of, you know, the property tax values in, in the year 2000, we'd go to the year 2024, 2025. Obviously, property tax values have increased since that time.
or township, has to, I don't know, do economic development activities. A lot of that money goes to state agencies, county agencies, what have you. But with the DDA, the way you establish it, so look, we'll do, use South Lyon as an example, established, I believe in 1996 and the base year of the tax capture is the year 2000. So what that means is any property tax increases going forward from the year 2000, the DDA captures that increase in the property taxes. So it's not an additional tax on the businesses, it's just the DDA captures the increase in the property taxes over the course of time and they reinvest that money back into the DDA district. That's how, that's how tax increment financing works. Now, if you were to expand a DDA district or alter the boundaries or do anything like that, that opens up a whole other process where you, where the other taxing jurisdictions, so you have, so the DDA captures tax dollars from the city, from the county, from the library, and we do not capture any school taxes. Once you open that up, it allows these other taxing entities to either opt out or kind of enter into a negotiation with the DDA to say, hey, you know, you're actually not going to capture these tax dollars, or they could just opt out entirely. So, expanding the district is not only a ton of work, I mean, you have to send it out in, you know, multiple newspapers, you have to notify everybody, the council has to be in favor of it, the board, the DDA board has to make the recommendation to expand the district. You really do stand to lose a lot of money. You could potentially reset your base year, which would mean, instead of, you know, the property tax values in the year 2000, we'd go to the year 2024, 2025. Obviously, property tax values have increased since that time, so we would be losing the amount of money that we capture, therefore, less dollars to the DDA to invest back into the downtown.
Yeah, and I think that's important for people to understand because clearly, from my point of view, you know, and I'm only one vote, but from my point of view, it would not be beneficial to the DDA to engage in any expansion of that DDA because the risk is, I mean, he identified the risk. The risk of enlarging that DDA to include somebody because they want to be included is that, exactly what you said, is the loss of your ability to use that incremental tax for the funding of your activities. So, I clearly would not be in favor of it and, but I think it's important to understand that there is a very good justification and rational basis for why enlarging that DDA district is not on the table for certain businesses that may want their inclusion, particularly when you're half a mile outside of the DDA. So, I just wanted to get that out there, but thank you for that explanation. A business owner contacted me and I think this is probably an interesting discussion to have because I think it's important for people in the community. The discussion came to me regarding the issue of firearms in the social district area. So, I thought maybe the chief could possibly talk a little bit about that. I did my research on it. I did look fairly extensively at how this was passed at the state level and it did not appear that there were any restrictions on, for example, if somebody open carries and decides to walk through the social district area, whether there are any statutory limitations or restrictions to that kind of conduct. And by conduct, I mean open and carry in the social district area. So, just some general discussion on that.
Yeah, so, state of Michigan isn't an open carry state. There is no, that I can find any prohibition about open carrying in public, correct? There are statutes on the book that address being intoxicated or even having a CPL and being intoxicated while you're walking with your firearm. And they come down to, and they're all misdemeanors. So it's something kind of like a drunk driving where your bodily alcohol content is at a certain level, it's going to be, if the lower end would be 08, to 1 would be a 90-day misdemeanor, then it goes up from there. If you have a CPL, then you start getting sanctions against your CPL, what can be indefinitely taken away from you. So there are laws on the books that prohibit walking around while intoxicated with a firearm or even open carrying or CPL. So, there are laws on the books, but there is nothing that's addressed as far as open carry in a social district. If someone's open carrying in the public, that's legal.
And I think that's an important distinction to make, is that the conduct of open carry is not the issue. The issue is whether or not there is alcohol associated with the carrying of the firearm. So, for those business owners that have an issue with open carry, you know, you have an issue with open carry and you'll continue to have it until the law changes a little bit to maybe fit a more, a narrative that maybe you're a little bit more interested in. But, but I think it's important to let people know. I mean, you have some rights here in the state of Michigan and those rights were not restricted by the social district. However, don't drink and open carry and don't drink and concealed carry. I mean, that should go out there very strong. Don't do it.
Correct.
Okay. And then there was one more issue. What is the issue, if the city manager might be able to talk about it? Apparently, well, not apparently, but you are not allowed to bring a dog into a restaurant, you know, because of food and whatever, so you can't bring your dog in while you're having dinner. So the question came up from a business owner, well, what about if dogs are out in the social district area where people are eating and where people are, you know, maybe having a drink? What is the city's restriction on walking your dog in these social district areas?
Well, there is no restriction in having dogs within the social district or even within the commons area. The restriction has to do with the actual, you know, consumption, just like you spoke of as far as in restaurants, and I know Nate's very familiar with this as well and he can perhaps speak a little bit further. Restaurants are allowed to get special permits to allow dogs within their establishments, but those establishments where they are serving food or serving alcohol that are on private property are completely different than our social district, which is still considered public property. So, the public is allowed to walk in there with, with the alcohol that was purchased with the licensed businesses. They're allowed to walk in there with some food if they want to, that they have that they want to eat, but they're technically not allowed to have that, those dogs within the areas of their restaurants. But they are two completely separate areas. Commons area and social districts are separate from a restaurant establishment where they're able to serve food and actually provide food to residents or whoever, the patrons. And perhaps Nate, I think maybe you have some additional items.
Yeah, I would just add that the commons area of the social district is different. It's distinct from the service area of an establishment. So, because you cannot serve alcohol or sell things in the social district, you have, it has to be done inside of the establishment and then the patron brings that cup or that drink or that whatever out, that's a distinction. So it's, it's not part of the service area, so there, so you can have dogs because of that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dil.
Thank you. Quick question. You were, when you were talking about expanding the DDA, you don't, I'm not necessarily advocating for this, but I just want to clarify. You don't have to extend the DDA to extend the social district though, do you?
No.
Okay, so then, so that's not really relevant to the discussion then, right? I mean, you could, you could, if you wanted to, extend the, not you, but you, extend the social district without extending the DDA.
Yes, you could.
Okay. And I just wanted to say that I did a socially responsible with a designated driver pub crawl last week in Brighton and I cannot wait to do that in South Lyon because I'd rather spend our money here. And it was really, it was really great, they have a great social district, but I do want to mention that they do have a, from one place to another, there is a half mile in between. And if someday we decide to expand the social district, I would be in favor of that as well. I'm not going to vote against it because of this, but I would really like us to keep thinking that way because we did walk quite a distance from downtown, from Main Street all the way down Grand River on the trail. So anyway, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, did you have something?
Yeah, so that same business owner copied everybody on the council with those emails. The other email he asked was whether people could purchase his product in that specially designed container, take it to the commons area and imbibe in that location. So, would you like to elaborate on that for us, Nate?
So just, the only thing that you can take into the social district legally is the cup not to exceed 16 ounces with the two logos on it, one for the social district and one for the establishment from which it was purchased. So you can't bring, I don't know, like a bottle of wine and pour that into your cup because the bottle of wine exceeds 16 ounces. So, you cannot have anything that exceeds 16 ounces, it has to have those two labels on it that clearly mark that it's from the social district and that is it, nothing else. No glasses allowed, no, I don't know, kegs, scrowlers, anything like that, so, yeah.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I thought that was a good conversation about a couple of things and obviously we all were in on the email. Does anyone else have any questions for Nate or Paul? Oh, sorry Glenn, I didn't, Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
And this, this is actually just spurned by some of the discussion earlier. I wasn't aware that the district could end up being enhanced beyond what the footprint of the DDA is.
Yep.
It seems to me that the main, main business that would be looking forward to that would end up having, having something to say about that and maybe trying to give us some, some reason why we would end up dragging them in there. So, it seems like a difficult thing to try to, to get from A to B, but I mean, Lisa had suggested there's a half a mile in Brighton that people traverse, so that's not something that, if you're, I guess if you're hardy enough and thirsty enough, you might end up going down there, but by the time you get back to the, I guess you would have to establish places that would be commons areas outside of that district, right?
Within the district.
Outside of our existing district, so, so you have to go, essentially the district would have to be just, let's just call it what it is, I mean, if Wichita were the ultimate place to go to, somewhere between there and the downtown would need to end up having a commons area, correct?
So that whole stretch from where the social district currently ends, so it would be basically right now from just south of, yeah, south of Hinden and Engineering where the little 390 South Lafayette is, the city-owned property there, that's the, like the end of the commons area, so it would go from that parcel. And depending on which side of the street you want to go on, because there's that to consider as well, but it would have to stretch continuously from the Wichita to that, to allow for people to be able to carry their drinks. Because if you can't, you can't take your drink out of the commons area, so. The commons area would have to be inclusive of all of Pontiac Trail from, from there.
Okay, then I do understand what you're saying. All right, thank you.
Yep.
I just, I mean, it's a nice thing to be able to at least present it if it's brought up.
Yeah.
Here, we need a motion, right?
Councilmember Dil.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the resolution designated a social district commons area and adopting a management and maintenance plan in order to allow certain on-premise liquor licensees, expanded use of shared areas for consumption of alcohol pursuant to Public Act 124 of 2020.
We have a motion by councilmember Dil, supported by councilmember Kurtswell. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Kurtswell?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Dil?
Yes.
Elchat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you Nate. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
So I'd like to make the motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend the city of South Lyon Code of Ordinances, Chapter 8, Alcoholic Liquor of the City of South Lyon Code of Ordinances, Article 3, Social Districts.
I'll support.
A motion by councilmember Kennedy, supported by councilmember Kibble. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, could you lead us in a roll call vote, please?
Dil?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kurtswell?
Yes.
Elchat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. Anyone have anything on the budget tonight? We will now open the floor for our public comment. Please remember to state your name and address and our two-minute time limit. Okay, we'll close the floor for public comment and the manager's report was city manager Zelnick.
Thanks, mayor. First, I want to congratulate Dana, along with everybody else, to honor recognition this evening. Dana was very accepting of me when I came into the community five years ago, not only as a manager, but as a friend in providing guidance. I was very happy of her acceptance as well as very happy of her acceptance by her large German shepherd dog Max, who came frequently visiting to the city hall. Haggadorn Sanitary Sewer and Road Paving Project, the utility contractors have trimmed the trees and are lining the sanitary sewers and they began milling the roadway last Saturday with the majority of the excavation work already begun. A couple of meetings ago, we talked about the 150th anniversary ornaments. Some of you saw those at the meeting, want to make everybody know, make it known that they are available at the Historical Society. The trail construction continues from Volunteer Park to Princeton. The pathway has been installed. They were installing fencing along the pond that is just north of Volunteer Park and they're also working on the replacement of the concrete sidewalks that adjoin the pathways as well as some of the approaches at some of the roads. In relationship to the Oakland County Transit meetings that we've been having, we had another meeting with Oakland County officials and community leaders last week to discuss our transit services within South Lyon and Oakland County that relates to the transit millage that was levied last November. We are working with county officials to lower the transit fares for the residents within our service area and to also increase our options by partnering with other agencies, Smart, Woda, et cetera. The county hopes to have in place a new contract with People's Express to provide these services by September 1st of this year and thus would eliminate our need to have to contract separately with People's Express. I'll be providing more information with you at later meetings regarding that. McCady Park, we did have a meeting with our engineer and also our architect, Mark Russell, regarding the design and layout of the parking lot that's adjacent to the First Responders' Memorial and the Veterans' Memorial and will also be used for parking for the Historical Village. I did mention also that we are working with staff at reviewing our cemetery sewer fees for residents and non-residents and also relationship to the new columbarium that was planned for the installation within this year's, this year coming budget. The sanitary sewer and under CSX Railroad, that's on, between 10 and 11 mile, the project is currently out for bid with due July 13th. We expect to have the award of that contract and a second meeting in July. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have after, of course, they finish with their applause for the evening.
Anyone have anything for city manager Zelnick tonight? Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
Real quick, I have been hearing from residents over in Oak Creek and I did convey to them that the bridge may not go in until sometime next spring. I do want to let you know that, you know, they're pretty upset. I know there's not much we can do, but if there is anything you can do to push that project ahead and get that bridge in sooner rather than later, because they're almost going on two years, possibly with that bridge, a year and a half, so. So I just thought I would bring it to your attention. Also, just want to remind everybody that close to $450,000 goes out of our community because of the rapid transit tax that was passed through the county last year and hopefully we can recover $450,000 worth of services back into the city of South Lyon for particularly our seniors and, and it's not just seniors, but, you know, transit care is, or transit opportunities also are those that, that have medical issues, that, you know, don't have family around to take them to a doctor and a lot of other things. So, it's not just the seniors, there's a whole range of individuals that can use this transit service. So, $450,000 should get us a lot, so hopefully it'll be a good bidder for us on that.
Anyone else have anything for Paul tonight? All right, thank you. We'll go on to council comments this evening and we'll start with councilmember Dil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, like everybody else I'm sure here, want to thank Dana and congratulate her. I met Dana when I was actually running against her for city council and she could not have been more wonderful and helpful and she's just an absolute delight to have in our city. She's, you know, that, that could have, she could have gotten that 10 years ago, that recognition, so she's wonderful, I just want to say that. I also want to congratulate Karen Backus of Coral Sash. They are opening a second location, so that was pretty impressive for them with their growth. I wanted to mention Nomo May, I know that was brought up last week and I, and I asked the city manager if we could put that on an upcoming, upcoming, why can't I think? Agenda, thank you. And he said that we're going to do some research before that comes back, so it's just not forgotten. I also wanted to, one more time, and I really appreciate Allison Rannish coming up and talking about the Pride event, reminding people that the event is July 8th between 12 and 5. It is a third annual. The past two events occurred without incident. I was there at the entirety of the, of the last one and there, nothing of which I have been hearing, I've been hearing some very disparaging things, which has made me very sad and disappointed. And none of the things that people have, are saying would occur have occurred and will occur. I've heard things like abomination and evil. When people malign, I can't tell you, Allison is a wonderful, kind, helpful, positive force in our community. Her committee is going to put together an amazing event and when we, she's done everything to secure permits, talk with the police, ensure the event is safe and fun, and when you disparage the event, you disparage her, you disparage a lot of my residents, a lot of our residents. And also, I get a little emotional because also my daughter. So, it, I get a little angry when I So, it, I get a little angry when I hear these things. And I just want to say, there's going to be some things and events that you're not going to like in the community, but the First Amendment protects the right of the people to peacefully assemble, and you might not like it, but you cannot ask the government to ignore the First Amendment and discriminate against people, especially our own residents. You know, there's things I don't find of particular interest, I just don't go. So, I just want to reiterate what I said last week. If someone doesn't like the idea of Pride, I ask them to please not attend, or I'd like to amend that by saying, please attend with an open mind, I would love to show you around. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dilg. Councilmember Hanson?
Nothing for me this week, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Well, I promised my colleagues I would make it short.
And I didn't.
First of all, I too would like to say congratulations to Dana. I know her personally, she's a very good friend, and I'll plenty of opportunities to chat and give her hugs after tonight. Also, I'd like to thank Joy Riders for an incredible start to the city concerts in the park. Yes, it rained, yes, they played, yes, people came, and yes, it rained at Woodstock, too, and everybody had a great time. So, I would like to say that I thoroughly enjoyed hosting the concert for the city, for this first concert in the park, and I'd like to thank HRC, Safe Belt, and CIB for their generous support of this summer's program. So, thank you to the sponsors. Also, I want to thank Trevor for finding my pruners in Paul Baker Park, so thank you, Trev, and the guys at DPW. And last, as to the Pride event, I'd like to join with my colleague, Lisa Dilg, in saying, you know, I, I have very close friends that attended the event last year, and they had a great time, and this is a, a good event, and I have to agree, if anybody on this council stands up for First Amendment, it's me, sometimes to chagrin, but I, I do, I stand up for it. But it's not just First Amendment that is speaking, you know, in the park. It is, it is people that are joining together in a sense of humanity, that are saying to one another, we care about you, we care about your kids, we care about this, so it's more than free speech. But enjoy yourself, and have a good time, and, and I will have to say that, speaking of free speech, real quick, St. Joseph's Catholic Church does its annual abortion with the crosses out there on a Pontiac Trail. That, too, is a matter of free speech, and this was the first year that there were no death threats to the, to the Catholic Church. So, I want to thank those members in the community that maybe are becoming tolerant, and understanding that free speech is what it is. If you don't like it, you don't have to necessarily accept what's being said, but you don't have to go out and violently protest because someone has a different opinion. Your event's going to go off like, just extremely well. So, I think things are settling down. So, I don't think you have anything to worry about, for Pete's sake. Enjoy yourself, have a good time.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Councilwoman Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to, to thank Dana Johnston for all she has done for this community and its residents. Her recognition was long overdue. Also, want to remind everyone that the Lake Street Cruisin' is this Wednesday, starting at 6:30, and also, just to remind, there, there is no concert in the park on Friday, June 30th. Next, I want to let folks know that on Tuesday, tomorrow night, June 27th, Brad Heiss from Comerica Park, Comerica Bank, rather, will provide notary services at the Salem South Lion District Library. So, if you need something notarized, stop by and see him, bring a photo ID, and do not sign your documents before your arrival, no appointments required. And while I'm mentioning the Salem South Lion District Library, I want to congratulate them on the 30th anniversary for them becoming a district library. They are truly a jewel in our community, and I'm certain they'll be providing service to our residents for decades to come. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilwoman Kibble?
More of the same. Dana has been a rock star, as was said earlier, since I worked, I moved here, so it's wonderful that everybody has recognized over the course of her career here, just how much she's played a role, and all the, the good things have taken place, so. I just wanted to pass along that we were at the farmer's market on the weekend, and as we were getting ready to leave, one of the vendors, Andre from Green, Green Valley Farms, had, gave, gave my wife and I a handful of flowers to put in to that pocket park over on, by the barber shop. So, we, we got the place dressed up, and there, there's still plenty of things that can go ahead to adorn that thing, but it's moving in the right direction, and I just wanted to say thank you very much to Andre for, for reaching out and wanting to be a contributor for, for our downtown. That's all I had, thank you.
Awesome. So, Dana Johnston, you guys, I met Dana Johnston when I was nine years old, playing junior league football on Nine Mile by the high school. So, what was she doing there? Volunteering to be a medic. Hurrah and cry. So, these folks are exactly what you want in your community, to have the type of community we have. They are just awesome. You know, it was very, long overdue, you know, to take care of Dana and the family, you know, it's, it's all of them, you know, they're, they're running around at the Memorial Day Parade, and, and you know to listen, though, because they've got that bark in their, in their voice, you know? So, so, great night for them, I'm thankful that they were all here to be here. You know, we're going to continue to do that until November. You know, I hope everyone's been able to get out, and although today was not a great day with it, with the weather and all the summer fun stuff that's here, the kids are out of school now, so watch out for them out on the streets, you know, and, you know, let me know if you see a pickup baseball game, because I'm down. So, with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Councilwoman Kurtzwell?
Move to adjourn.
Have a great night, everybody, thank you.